Call the meeting in order, please rise for the, uh, Plenarations. Please join me in a moment of silence. You may be seated. Michelle, we don't have anybody on the phone with us tonight, do we?
Alright, so, uh, Chairman, uh, Bittenger is currently on airplane and Matthew Young is overseas, so there's just gonna be the three amigos tonight, so. The first item on the agenda is, uh, approval of the agenda, and I would move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich Allows, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes three zero. Onto the consent agenda, items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is required by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the November fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Uh, appro- item two B, we'll call it, is approval of the minutes from, of the November sixth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. And three C, approval of the minutes of the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Item three is approval of claims. Item four from Board Administration Karen James is approval of a resolution of tax suspension for initials L.M. Item five from Human Resources Melissa Thomas. Item A, approval of a memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B, to authorize to initiate the hiring process. Item C, approval of request to deauthorize county positions. Item D, approval of a one-time extension of open enrollment to December fifth. And item six from Planning and Zoning Director Dan Priestley. Uh, approval to schedule December ninth at four forty P.M., December sixteenth at four forty P.M., and December twenty-third at four forty P.M. for three public hearings on a proposed zoning ordinance map amendment, rezone, of thirty-six and a half acres located on parcel ending in zero 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 one one. Section twenty-four Township eighty-seven North Range, forty-six West Grange Township, from Ag Preservation to Ag Estates Zoning District. And I will move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries three to zero. Item seven from Deputy Commissioner of Elections Steve Hoffmeyer is the second-tier canvas for the twenty twenty-five city and school election.
Hi, Steve Hoffmeyer, Deputy Commissioner of Elections. I have the second-tier canvas here with the canvas summary, the abstract of votes, and the certificates for you guys to approve and receive, and then also to sign, so.
Okay. I move to receive.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries three to zero. That's a lot to sign, that's right. We'll start those down with Kent, and we can hang out afterwards. Alright, item eight, Emergency Services Director Drew Byer. Item A is approval of position change from part-time E.N.T. to part-time advanced E.M.T.
Good afternoon, Drew Byer, Woodbridge County Emergency Services Director. I have some dated agenda items, so accept it to correct.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero.
What you have to present it to you is, first one is for employee that went from E.M.T. level to advanced E.M.T. Level which increased, still in the same category as an E.M.T. as far as the financial part of the coding per se. So it's a part-time, which is still point two-five F.T.E. Moving him up to next wage range of, um, appropriate amount should be at twenty-five forty-five from the current, twenty sixty-two is the first one. Be minimal impact for next year's FY twenty-seven. About five hundred and seventy-three dollars fifty-three cents, as you see noted there. This should be half that because we finished out the last six months of this year. It is a part-time position, so it's, the amount of impact will vary on his hours worked. If he gets no hours, obviously, be no impact. If he works beyond a certain number of hours, of course, like everything else, it'll be different. So that one, maybe that change, requesting of that.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a very minimal financial impact, but the, the services that this person will be able to do as an, as an advanced E.M.T. versus a regular E.M.T. is a great service.
Able to give more medications.
Absolutely.
Not quite to the paramedic level, but increase, he'll be able to give some pain meds to patients, uh, like D-fifty, dextrose pretty much. Uh, other, like Zofran, other type medications of that nature for baseline in between the two levels. So there's a different skill, additional training.
It looks like a minimal, uh, financial impact of five hundred and seventy-three dollars fifty-three cents for FY twenty-seven.
Yep. Of course, that'll be, that'll come changed when we do with next year's budgeting process, it'll roll in with that.
For sure. I would move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries three to zero. Now, item B, also from Emergency Services Drew Byer, approval of position change from part-time E.N.T. to part-time paramedic.
So we have one client that, or no, one employee when we first got hired, mentions an E.M.T. that her, her incentive was become a paramedic, she did well. She spent the last year getting the training and requirements and passed our testing, she currently is still, be considered part-time. She is the unique one because it goes from the regular budget to the paramedic budget, different classification, different salary base, or different funding source for the paramedic position. Um, she'll be going from a point two-five F.T.E. to point zero-five F.T.E. As you see on there, the amount on that is thirty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, question, three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents for the FY twenty-seven. Same case as before, it'll vary on number of hours she works. She works full-time in other jobs, so basically whenever she's able to work the other days, will come in and fill in at the paramedic level. With her spot being the uniques factor, she's going from the E.M.T. spot up to the paramedic area. That one turn will also leave us a part-time spot open for an E.M.T. to be filled at some point. So basically hers deal rolls into her appointment to funding coming out of the paramedic budget to take that position and then eventually filling the part-time E.M.T. spot back, so we then have three E.M.T.'s in still.
And the paramedics is essentially your highest level of training of any of your.
There is one, it's called Critical Care Paramedic, we only have one of those working for us now, but that's closer, that's the most common you'll find through the state of life, is a paramedic certification.
And that's a financial impact, as you said, of three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents for FY twenty-seven. Can you speak to a lot of, you know, you, you guys interface with a lot of the communities and their volunteer ambulances, how many of our volunteer communities have paramedics versus E.M.T.s, or what is that ratio?
Right now, if I remember correctly, there's only two that were what called provisional paramedic services. Basically, if they have a paramedic available, that's volunteers available, they can run as a paramedic service. If not, they reboot back either to the advanced E.M.T. level or to the basic E.M.T. level. But right now, there's only two, and I believe it's gonna be Sergeant Bluff and Lawton.
Wow.
Years and years ago, Anthony had it, but people moved on and times have changed, so.
Well, hearing that, I would move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew. Alright, on to item nine, Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz. Item A is approval of L.A.C. And I better put in there, old L.A.C.
Old L.A.C.
Approval of old L.A.C. demolition. Form of contract plans and specifications to be utilized in the competitive bid process. Sorry to you folks from C.M.B.A., we do not want you to knock down the new jail, just the old one. Okay, thank you. Kenny, take it away.
Yeah, Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director, uh, this agenda item, uh, follows Chapter twenty-six, uh, bid requirements. And for you today is just to, uh, approve those, uh, approve the form of contract and the plan and the specifications uh, that were in your backup materials. Um, I have representatives, of course, from C.M.B.A. here that can, uh, assist with answering any questions that you might have with those plan specifications or the project itself. Or are there any questions that I might be able to answer for you?
Um, if you, if you would, Kenny, or any of our folks from C.M.B.A., if you would just talk about, uh, the bid process and how that goes for anybody in the public wanting to follow along with that process.
Sure, um, so this is the first step in the process. Uh, once these plans are sent out, our, our next agenda item, which is, uh, following this right up, um, is to set a public hearing date. Um, and then to send out public notice. Um, those are the first steps required, uh, by the Chapter twenty-six Iowa bid laws. Once those steps are completed, we virtually send this out for competitive bids. I, currently, I, I, it appears to me that, um, that we have some, um, maybe having some good choices that will come in and give us some bids on the demo. Um, and Terry or Tanner, if you wanna step up and just talk to, talk to the board about the process going forward. Um, and actually maybe a little bit of information on where we've already been to get to this point, that would help, be helpful, I think.
Oh, yeah, the Terry Glade, C.M.B.A. architects. So, yeah, this has been a long process, um, kind of, uh, exploring the building Kenny's done, asbestos remediation. We've gone through the city, uh, coordinated with the city as far as what needs to happen to the site after the building is done. Um, utility, uh, all that's been worked into the plans. So we'll have the, the, uh, public hearing, uh, on the second, and then we'll open the bids, um, publicly on, let's see.
Ninth, I think.
Ninth, yeah, the ninth, um, yeah, seven days after that. Um, so then we'll take the, take the bids, we'll open the bids, and hopefully be able to bring those to you at that, at that meeting then for approval. The contract is in the, the form of contract is in the documents, and, uh, Legals had a chance to review that. So it should be a matter of, of the numbers come in right, then, um, just go ahead and they can get, get going and again, be working with the city, uh, street closures, uh, utility capping, uh, coordinating with Eighth Street Reconstruction. Um, that's all being coordinated together in this, kind of our whole process.
Any questions from the board?
I guess, uh, I was just wondering about, you know, for the safety of, uh, people of Sioux City or people that work downtown, how would that building be brought down?
Um, there's no, there's no implosion, there's no explosion, it's, it's, um, it's basically knocking it down chunk by chunk. If you saw the old YMCA taken down, probably something similar to that. Uh, it's very similar construction type, a lot of concrete, reinforced concrete and brick. So again, barricades put up, and, and again, streets closed as necessary to protect the public.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, with that, I would move approval of a, uh, form of contract plans and specs for the old L.A.C. demolition, um, in the competitive bid process.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero. Item B, approval of a public hearing date of December second, twenty twenty-five at four forty P.M.
Uh, this agenda item, uh, again, just sets that, sets that hearing date. Um, and also, uh, the next motion that follows it up is to, uh, approve the public notice, uh, for that hearing to be published.
I would move, uh, approval of a public hearing date to be set for December twenty, December second, excuse me, December second, twenty twenty-five at four forty P.M.
Uh, does that one conflict with the, uh, oh, no, that was December ninth, sorry, I'll second.
That was a great catch, but no, it does not conflict. Uh, motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero. And item C is just approval of a public notice of hearing, and I would move that as well.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero. Thank you, guys.
The next set of agenda items that'll be coming, uh, for the board, uh, in following up on this is the next steps will be, uh, on December second, we'll have some more coming in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Item ten from our county auditor, Michelle Scaff. Honorable Michelle Scaff, um, approve a recount request for the Sergeant Bluff Luton Public Measure.
Hello, Michelle Scaff, tonight I will be acting Commissioner of Elections. So we're here to talk about a recount request that we received from individuals from Sergeant Bluff School District. And they have petitioned on the thirteenth to have a recount of the school bond, uh, public measure, um, that was on the ballot, uh, for the city's school election. So, uh, the board does have to order this recount, and that's why I'm here before you today. And I wanted to fill you in on a little bit of the history of some of the changes that have, that occurred and why I didn't have any homework material here while I was still trying to, uh, get all of the details, because we've had some legislation changes in House File nine twenty-eight that was just approved and put into effect in July. So it affected the public measures a little bit as far as the recounts go. And some of the language was, um, there was some debates about how to read the language because it states that you can qualify for a recount if the difference in the affirmative and the negative votes is one percent or less. But a public measure is a sixty percent to win measure, and so that makes it virtually impossible to have a recount on a public measure. So we had the school's attorney look at the code, Joshua reviewed it, and the Secretary of State. Now, as auditor, I received guidance from the Secretary of State in input from the other individuals. Um, and everyone has looked at it and determined that, uh, I have been given guidance that the recount can exist, um, that we can do the recount. If you look at the numbers, we had one thousand nine hundred, now, where is that? One thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight total votes for this measure. And in order to win at sixty percent, and we round up, they would have needed one thousand one hundred and eighty-one positive votes. They had one thousand one hundred and seventy-four positive votes. So if seven votes had been shifted from nos to yes, then that measure would have passed. And if you look at the difference of sixty percent minus the total number of affirmative votes, it's only point three-five percent. So the statute that the school has interpreted is to provide a recount where the outcome is dependent on the difference in votes totaling less than one percent or fifty votes as opposed to just looking at the affirmative minus the, the negative. If we did read it literally, then that means that you can only have a recount if the school had won by fifty point five per, uh, fifty point five percent. Not if they had won, but if they had, had fifty point five percent, would have qualified for a recount, which is way off from the sixty percent needed to win. So there's a little bit of, uh, interpretation that had to go on between the attorneys before I could come with a recommendation ultimately from the Secretary of State that they would approve for the recount to happen. Joshua, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I would add is that I, I hope the legislature cleans up the statute, uh, a little bit. As Michelle said, there was the change of July first, and, um, I, I think the, the main thing they do had to do with, uh, a change to the requirement of posting bond, uh, as part of the recount request. But there are some public measures that only require fifty percent, uh, plus one majority, and, uh, others like the school bond here, uh, require the sixty percent. Uh, the statute, uh, as written currently doesn't differentiate between the two. But as Michelle pointed out, if the language is read, uh, literally, the statute as it currently exists, there wouldn't be the right to a recount, um, in a situation where you have just a handful of votes shy of the sixty percent. But, uh, you would have a right to recount if you're a few shy, a few votes shy of fifty percent, but nowhere close to, uh, the actual requirement for passing the measure, so. Appreciate that the Secretary of State's office was willing to take a look at it and provide some guidance, uh, that Michelle's relying on. And, uh, in the end, uh, it's an outcome where it allows the, it's a, it's a very close vote, and it allows the recount to, uh, to happen. So I, I think that that's a, a positive outcome.
If we approve the, uh, the recount, what is the timeline, um, and, uh, cost?
So if you'd like to receive this document.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes three zero.
So in the petition, uh, the petitioner can delegate one individual, and they have delegated the superintendent of the Sergeant Bluff Schools, Chad Jansen, to be their individual on the recount board. The recount board is made of three individuals, I delegate one individual, which I delegated myself, and then the two of us get together to choose a third person. And we have chosen my deputy, Steve Hoffmeyer, as that third person. So, um, today we got together to discuss the process, and, um, what it would entail is we have six precincts that are affected. Um, and there's a list there on that form, which ones, which is actually four polling locations and then absentee. So each of those, uh, the ballots are kept in different ballot boxes, um, secured with a, uh, security, uh, lock on those, and we will open those up and count them individually, compare the, uh, results from Election Day to what we count on the day of the recount. Uh, it's proposed to have the recount on Monday, the twenty-fourth, at one P.M. It's a public process, so I'll be putting out a press release upon your approval of this. Um, and then, uh, basically, this document kinda outlines the, how this will, will function as far as doing the recount.
Any other questions from Michelle? I would move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Any discussion? Thanks for all your work on that, Joshua, your work as well. Joshua, welcome to the club of telling the state legislature to clean up their act, so we're glad to have you up here.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero. Alright, moving on, item eleven, Board Administration Ryan Erickson. Uh, approval to increase county contribution to health, self-insurance health plan, excuse me.
As we've had on discussion the last few weeks, the healthcare fund has been, uh, decreasing over the last few years, and it has decreased at about sixty thousand dollars per month. What I would like to propose is to, for the remainder of this plan year, which is only for the month of December, is to increase the county's contribution by approximately twenty percent to try to help offset the decrease in the health insurance fund. If we do approve the new plan, then there will be new contribution rates by the employee and the employer effective January first.
So that twenty percent's about a hundred thousand for the month of December?
Yes.
We've, Ryan and I had a lot of discussion about this, this afternoon, didn't we? You know, Ryan just lives in the numbers, and I understand why he's wanting to, to balance this out for the end of this, uh, for the end of this year. My concern, and, and I can vote for this tonight because I, I understand how it makes your life easier from the budgeting standpoint. My, you know, my concern is that as, as the county continues to have these shortfalls, you know, our split has been that the county contributes ninety percent of healthcare expenditures, and the employee contributes ten. But every time that we have these, these shortfalls, whether it was the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, or this one for a hundred, you know, we're contributing a hundred. And there's really not a way for us to get that other ten percent. And so, in a way, that is a, a bonus, or however you wanna call it, to our employees, which I'm totally fine with. But I, I think that that needs to be said because, over this last year, we've had to put a lot of money from reserves into the, into this healthcare plan. And it seems to have not been understood by employees that, that that's what they got. And I know they didn't see it in the way of a paycheck per se, but it definitely was something that, that helped them, and so if, if this, you know, motion approves, you know, passes tonight, um, I just want that to be clear that we are again moving, you know, money, and we're paying a hundred percent of that. Whereas any other time, any other expenditure, it would be a ninety, a ninety-ten split, so.
Well, I mean, just seeing that there's only three of us here tonight, and, you know, the chair being heavily involved with some of this, I mean, I, I get it, we probably, you know, what's the harm in tabling this for just a little bit till the next meeting? I don't, or are we gonna have a meeting next week?
So there is gonna be, Dan Bittenger was gonna call a short meeting on Wednesday morning to pay some claims, but there's no reason that this couldn't be on there. Maybe you didn't see that today, Ryan, but he did say we wanna have a short meeting on Wednesday morning. But even if this is in the first month of, or first week of December, does that still work or not?
I would say if this is voted on the second, it doesn't really give the auditor's office enough time to change the rates in the system. So I would say it'd just be better not to do it. If we, you know, don't do it here, or we just make the changes effective January first.
And even next week doesn't, that's too, well, and I know it's Thanksgiving and everything else, so then that's still too short notice?
Yeah, I, I would say with.
If you wanna defer that to me.
Yeah, I would defer that to.
So, um, generally, if we get those changes the week before payroll, you know, that's, it's, it's a pretty simple change this part as long as we haven't started processing the payroll, because we just have to change the tables, and that'll apply to all of the staff. Now, when we go to January, where we might have big changes due to open enrollment, that's what takes a lot of time, and I think we're shooting for December tenth or something to get that. That's, that's what takes the most. But, um, if you, if you were to make action, um, you know, today, it's a non-payroll week, it could be applied to next week, but otherwise.
I was looking to make it effective in December, so, you know, that's where if they approve it next week, would it be able to be implemented for the, I think, the twelfth, or?
Um, yeah, that, I think that should work.
Yeah, so I would say if you wanna table it until the full board is here, then.
We still would have some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've just, with, with two members down, and it's, it's not like, I mean, it, it's a large sum of money, but it's not the biggest that we've moved. But I would appreciate them having the ability to give some input on that as well, but.
I'll move to table it. Yeah, I feel the same way, and I, you know, I'm thankful that Ryan has worked on this and put some hard work into it. And, uh, but I think it'd be good to wait until Matthew and Dan are back here to make that decision.
So is that a second, Kent?
That's a second.
Okay. Alright, motion by Dietrich, seconded by Carper, to table until next week. Any, any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor of tabling say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Carries three zero. All right, item 12 from Chairman Bittinger is to approve $1,000 from gaming revenue to support the ISAC amicus brief. And I've got just a short letter here from ISAC that just kind of talks about this. I'll just, I'm just going to read part of it here and then we can have some discussion here. "We're reaching out on behalf of the Iowa State Association of Counties, Board of Directors with a request for financial support for an amicus brief in the case of Cowser v. Shelby County. The question before the United Supreme Court has the potential to impact all counties nationwide, and therefore the Board has voted to weigh in with the court. Shelby and Story Counties are seeking further appellate review at the United States Supreme Court of an Eighth Circuit panel's decision that invalidated their zoning ordinances regulating a hazardous liquid pipeline, in this case a CO2 pipeline, arguing that their local laws are preempted by the Federal Pipeline Safety Act. This case centers on whether local setback and other zoning ordinance constitute federally preempted safety standards or if the local zoning ordinances constitute permissible land use controls. Enclosed, you will find a detailed case from Timothy Whipple, Attorney at Dollars and Cooney." So Timothy Whipple is also the attorney that the county has been, has hired for the last couple of years in conjunction with other counties that have been fighting the, the carbon pipeline and some of the property rights issue. And so it's same guy, same firm. I saw on Friday that, this was as of Friday, so this could have changed. You know, there's a lot of county meetings today, but there were forty-four counties across Iowa that had, had contributed money to this cause, which is honestly, and there's still two weeks, I think, yeah, by next, no, this, this Friday, they need to have an answer. So I think there'll be, you know, many more counties that get added to the list this week. I know Dave and Kent, you guys came on after a lot of the, the pipeline and property rights issues came along, but we have made a commitment that we would defend property rights and defend local control. And I know on other issues that this board has been very vocal about keeping government local and accountable and accessible. And I think that this is kind of, that easily falls right in line with everything that we've been doing. And I think using gaming is a very appropriate source for this. And I would, I would be supportive of supporting this cause. And I, and I wish, you know, Shelby County and Story County as well have done a lot of work on this. Those supervisors have been really entangled in a, in a very defining legal battle. And I think this is a very small sacrifice to help them out. But I'd like to hear any other discussion on that.
No, I agree. I mean, I think it's a good thing and they're fighting it and, you know, it does weigh heavily over here with the landowner, you know, the property rights of a, of a private entity or a business coming in and trying to do what they're doing.
Well, no further comments. I would move to approve $1,000 from gaming to support the ISAC amicus brief.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, same by Dietrich. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Three to zero. Very good. All right, the last item on the agenda, item B is approval of the new Woodbury County Health Insurance Plan effective January 1, 2026. Melissa, you're already up here, so that's great.
Sure. Just Melissa Thomas, HR Director. I'm here to answer any questions you may have since this is chairman's agenda item. So whatever you would need to know. And then also we have Seth here, our consultant from Gallagher, if there's any other questions.
Karen, would you be able to pull up the, I'd just like to show the comparison, either what was in the background or the backup for the item or the deal I'm guessing we got from Gallagher. That just kind of compares where stuff was. Thank you. I understand that this was talked about at the department meeting last week. I would say this is probably somewhere middle of the road versus right in half. Okay, right in half of where we started. So Karen's got that pulled up. I'm not that blind. Matthew Ong is not here.
I don't even know why.
You're, you're on eight hundred percent Zoom there, Karen. If we could take that down just a skosh. Well, let's go down. I was thinking this page. Yeah, 140, there we go.
There you go.
No, I meant for anybody.
I know, but this app is on here.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I do want to point one thing out. It does say PPO 1,000 under the well mark for the PPO, but that should be PPO 500 since we did keep the deductible for the HMO and the PPO the same. There is the four tiers that have been added, as you can see on the bottom there. And what, what these numbers are would be the employee contribution for the, the four different tiers. A few other things I've changed would be the co-pays, a little bit of the deductible, and the out-of-pocket max, which increases from current, but as you mentioned, is half of what was first represented, I think, at the end of October.
So the co, so talk a little bit about the, you know, the co-pays went up a little bit, but now they count towards your deductible. Talk a little bit about that.
Right. By losing our grandfather status, excuse me, everything is, goes to our out-of-pocket max. Our deductibles, the co-pays, pharmacy, that all goes to the out-of-pocket max. So once you hit that 3,000, you're done paying for the year. Am I saying this correctly? Good. So, you know, that is one change and an advantage for the employee. As it sits now, we can hit your out-of-pocket max, but you're still paying those co-pays.
So on the new plan, you know, with, so with the new offering, we're going to have four plans. Single, single and spouse, single and children, and then family. The comparisons, looks like the, the single on the PPO actually went down a little bit. Family went up, you know.
The only major change would be the PPO family. It's gone up approximately $60. The actual PPO, excuse me, HMO family has gone down.
But then if you were someone that was just you and your spouse and were on the family plan, your, your rate went down also.
Yes.
So, so it's kind of a mixed bag, you know, some good for some and some maybe not so much for others.
But the correct funding levels for the different members and, and usage.
So Mr. Erickson, with these changes, if we enact these today, what's a projected, what are we projected to be at, at the end of this fiscal year? Are we going to be even? Is there a chance that we have a little extra? Is there a chance that we're behind? And I understand that it's a moving target.
I'm going to say we should be able to be a little ahead.
Okay.
We're probably not going to be a lot ahead, but this will contribute over nine million into the fund. And the claims being paid out last year was about nine million. So we should start adding to the fund.
Good. And, and that's a fine line too, right? Because we don't want to add a lot because then that means we have employees that are overpaying, but at the same time we can't go backwards. So it's trying to hit that target, but that's, you know, a very tough thing to do. So.
Unfortunately, we have gone down about 300,000 year to date. So it's the second half of this fiscal year, we may need to, you know, have a little bit more contributed.
Sure.
And as I said, that's why I wanted to add the hundred thousand in December. So.
Okay.
But I think over this, with being able to have, you know, Seth and the actuaries, we should be able to have a better ability to project what the cost should be per employee. And then the account, and the same thing, the contribution by the county as well.
Well, I've talked with Melissa and Ryan enough, so I don't have any other questions, but I will just say thank you to you two and you, Seth, because you've, and you've been under a major time crunch and, and you've had a lot of questions from us and you've had to get information to Seth. So thank you for getting us here. And I know that enrollment is through the fifth, so there's not a lot of time, but it was the best that we could do. And, and we kind of found some middle ground, but I'll open it up to any other questions from the public or from supervisors about the proposed plan.
No, I appreciate, you know, Melissa and, and, you know, Seth and, you know, the department heads, you know, getting together and whatever. I mean, this is a good middle ground, I think. You know, instead of going, to me, what I thought was maybe extreme, you know, starting off. But I mean, obviously everybody sees it though, too, that, how the health fund is right now. So I think this is a good middle ground and, and a good compromise here. Yeah, I say the same thing. Thank you for, you know, relieving some of the people's minds over this because people were a little upset in the beginning. Hopefully this is something that'll tone that down a little bit, and I think so. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And just to reiterate, you know, we'll have to hope that, that this is enough of a fix, that we're not too far behind, you know, at the end of this year. And we'll just have to, we can evaluate each month and see how we're trending and that's, you know, that's all we can do for now. So.
Okay.
Looks like Joshua's got a comment. Or he just stormed off? I'm not sure.
Well, again, again, I didn't plan on saying anything. And I'm just speaking as a county employee, obviously not as counsel of the board. When this was before the board earlier, I did ask the board to consider what other intermediate steps were available. And I think that this does show that the board's taking a look at things and providing different options for the employees. So I, I do appreciate that. I do just want to point out on the, on the PPO for families, I do feel like there's still going to be some sticker shock there with it going from, I think it's 219 or 220 currently to the 285. Whereas in June of this year, the family rate for the PPO was, I think, like 145, 147?
I don't recall, but they were saying it went up, what, $30 a month? So was it 190?
Yeah, so it went from, from what it was to 190 something. And then up to 285. So in less than six months to go from, you know, 140s to, to 285. And, and the employees haven't had a, a pay increase in there. So it, you know, obviously they have choices now, but for somebody that wants to remain there, it's a, there may be some sticker shock. So I do appreciate the board looking at it. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, you're not going to be able to make everybody happy. And I think especially those that are on that plan and want to stay there will, will feel that sticker shock. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Any other comments? I would, with that, I would move approval of the new Woodbury County Health Insurance Plan effective Jan. 1 of '26.
I'll second.
Motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries three to zero. Item 13, reports on committee meetings. I have none either. Item 14, then, citizen concerns.
Deb Maine, 1026 Charles Avenue. I just probably will reiterate what you said about the amicus brief, but that brought up an important question about who should have jurisdiction over certain projects and governing an interstate project. And I agree that the federal government should set standards. So I kind of heard it explained it this way. What if Iowa wanted a steel pipe, but Minnesota preferred concrete, South Dakota wanted cardboard? I mean, you have to have a standard for construction and maintain that standard. But land use and zoning are best determined by citizens and our boards. So like you said, this case has potential to impact counties all over the nation. So right now, of what I heard last night, 47 and now 48 counties have supported the ISAC brief. And at least five states, along with Emmons and Burley Counties in South Dakota. So I think your generous contribution is going to play a big part in getting this reviewed by the U.S. Supreme Court. So, you know, in Iowa, when neighbors are in help, need help, someone steps up and you have done that. So thank you for your decision to protect our local control. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Seth.
Drew Barrigan, just one quick question. A vicious cheer question earlier about paramedic services in the county. I forgot to include, see, I look at those as professional and so is Danbury. So include those also on the diagram. So.
You know what? We don't want to forget Danbury.
Don't, yeah, don't forget about them.
We can't forget Danbury. All right. Thank you, Drew. Anything else? All right, moving on to board concerns. I'll just add on to a little bit of what Deb just said a little bit ago. I, we've heard Joshua vent about the legislature tonight. And one of the things that, what I, what I'd like to see from these counties that are funding this and saying, we believe that local control is the way things ought to be, whether it's for pipelines or anything else. I hope that our legislators in Des Moines are seeing this because there have been bills that are trying to strip county rights away from zoning or what other other things and, and move that power to Des Moines. And I hope that they see that we have had, and almost, you know, half of the counties say, no, we believe that, and I think there'll be more yet. But I've said, no, it's, local is best and, and we have the right to, to zone these things. And so hopefully that that sends kind of a shot across the bow to the legislature as they're getting ready for their session to start in January. So the other thing I will add is that there will not be a board meeting on Tuesday next week. There will be a board meeting Wednesday morning at 8:30 to cover some claims and, I think, a couple of things from Melissa with HR. The reason that is, is that Dan Bittinger and myself will be, along with Ryan Erickson, will be in Des Moines for hopefully two days of mediation regarding the damages of the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center. We've had a flurry of activity with our, our legal teams and our experts. We are very, very well prepared from the county's standpoint and the authority's standpoint. We are communicating our demands and our damages very clearly, very adamantly to the parties responsible. And we will show up to mediation fully prepared to talk about how we've been damaged. And so we hope that the other parties will as well. But keep us in your, in your thoughts and we hope that we can come home and represent the county in the best way possible and hopefully start to close the book on what has been, you know, a relatively ugly chapter in regards to our treatment on this, on this facility. Director Kenny Schmitz is going to be there as well. Sheriff Sheehan, representing the county. So we're going to have some good people there with some great knowledge. And we hope to come back in the coming weeks with some good news. Any offer that would be made there would have to be approved in a public meeting. There's, so there will be nothing that the board of supervisors will do that the public won't know about. And we will absolutely want any input from the public regarding any sort of an offer that we would get. So I just wanted to be full, clear and transparent on that. That's all I have. Dave or Ken, anything for more concerns?
About the meeting for next Wednesday, I will be with my patient, but I can call in for that. So I'll be.
Can you be here, Dave?
Yeah.
Because I, I'm not sure that Matthew will be back yet, but as long as we have a quorum. So I, I can be here. So.
So.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.